I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public.
Thanks, Ben.
Indivisible liberty of justice for all.
Justice for all. Thank you.
What happened?
Um, the first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda? Hearing none, a motion would be in order for the agenda as presented.
I make the motion.
Jim makes the motion. Second by Nate. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. General public comment. I see we have two public comment. Lindsey Ritter, or is there anything you'd like to share with us?
Hi, no, I'm here just to listen. Thank you.
Your April Morse.
I'm just here to listen. Thank you very much.
Okay. Is there anyone else from the public that's present that I've missed? Seeing none, we will move on to old business. The first order of old business, you've had time to think about this, and who would like to step forward first? And raise high is the Quarry Valley representative to serve on the Stafford Regional Advisory Board. Well, two weeks has not changed everyone's excitement for this position, I see. So should I give it another two weeks to come back, or?
Yeah, actually, Lisa, this is Gail. That would help me. I've been struggling with Benjamin being sick and having to drive him to a doctor's appointment, so I don't dare say yes this week.
Okay. So why don't we do this? I will sign up to do it, so we have a representative on paper, and then I will ask every month who would like to take that over.
That sounds good.
Great.
Thank you, Lisa.
Um, the second piece of old business is the landowner access agreement, and I know that we have a representative from that organization with us, Andy, if you would like to speak.
Yeah, this is Andy Vermilier. I'm the president of Slate Valley Trails. Thanks for taking this up. So I presented a landowner access agreement to the board to consider. It would kind of define the maintenance of the trail. Also, it includes your wish to have signage that only makes the trail available to the public during non-school hours. And if there's anything else that the board thinks is important that should be integrated into this agreement. I think this is a great opportunity to make sure that we're all on the same page with the projects going forward. So if there are any questions about the agreement, I'm happy to entertain or answer those questions.
Does anyone from the board have any questions about the agreement or about the concept in general?
Um, I don't.
Go ahead, Nate. Go ahead.
Go ahead, sir. Well, I was just gonna say, I don't think it should be something we ask until we have, you know, a legal representative look at it.
100% my question exactly, too. Just whether or not the new agreement has been reviewed yet.
Yeah.
It's clearly setting it at Chris Leopold's, on his desk.
I'm happy to entertain if there's any specific concerns. I know a lot of landowners are always worried about liability, and that agreement offers more protection than the state statutes. And so if there are any questions about that, I'm happy to give information.
Well, as I said, it's currently on the desk of our attorney, and there were a couple in in for under length of agreement, even though it says three years, you still left the number 10 on there, so that would need to be a correction. And, I mean, we can wait till we hear back from our attorney, but there were a couple of things under three where it says the landowner shall not obstruct or close the recreational trails. Well, I understand the premise of that. There probably should be some caveat to that, I mean, as landowners, of having the option if something was happening, or we were doing work, or we were having some kind of celebration or something there. So just having kind of like that blanket statement, I think, and we'll wait and see what our attorney says, but that might need to be a little more landowner-friendly for us. So there were a couple of things in here that I thought, but as I said, it's on his desk, and so at this point, I think we're gonna wait till we hear back from him, and is it going to inhibit you if we do not approve this until our December meeting, which would be the third Monday of December?
I think the timeline works fine on our end. The next grant opportunity has a flexible deadline, so that should be fine. And, you know, we're fine with working for whatever works best, obviously, for you. That's super important to us. So I think it is important that Slate Valley knows if there's closed closed trails, so that we can communicate that to the public and our user groups. And that's why it's written that way, but of course, we're accommodating in any way we can to make it happen.
Sure. And I think there's just a couple of things that we might, and like I said, we'll wait to see what our lawyer said, but we might want to just have tweaks. So were there any other questions or comments from board members?
Nope.
I mean, I think, as you know, and, oh, Kristen?
Oh, yeah, I was just gonna say, I wondered, since we have Andy here, is there anything that you wanted to share with us that you thought would be important for us to know before we hear from the lawyer?
Uh, I just wanna say that I think this is an asset to the town and to our youth. I was over on the rail trail a couple of weeks ago, and I ran into some, I assume, like, middle middle school age kids, and they were just raving about the Skills Park over there. And so I think the community is super excited about using this trail, and it's a real asset. So I'm happy that we're working with you on this.
Great. And I think that's certainly the consensus of the board, and that was our consensus at the last meeting. We have had the opportunity to speak with the town, so I think we've ironed out any miscommunication or concerns that there were there. And I don't think at any time the board was not positive about this, and we certainly all see this as an asset to your, to the community, as well as to our students at Poltoni Elementary School. But we do have a responsibility, obligation to send it to the attorney to make sure, for those that come after us, that we haven't done anything to tie their hands or, you know, anything detrimental to us. So if there aren't any other questions, we could place this back on the December agenda under old business for action at that time once we hear back from our attorney. All right, not hearing anything. Andy, thank you very much for reworking the agreement and for joining us tonight to address any questions. We appreciate the work, and we look forward to seeing what the trail will look like when finished.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, winter sports. Who's taking that subject up?
Is Joe Harrington on the call?
He is.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah, Joe, you wanna give a brief overview of winter sports and what that's gonna look like?
Sure. Of course, it's ever-changing and expected to change again as of Friday, this coming Friday. There are updates that are coming out frequently. As of right now, today, the official practice start date for any VPA sanctions, or at least the ones that have been given the go-to start, are the Monday after Thanksgiving, with a competitive season starting hopefully January 11th, which is our six weeks of practices to see how things go. There are a lot of protocols in place. Obviously, one of the biggest ones is a lack of spectators. There are other subtle protocols that are being put in place, but that is the biggest one. They're looking to extend the season to the end of March, which is traditionally the finals are around the second week in March, but they are looking to extend the winter season through the end of March. Of course, you know, with rec programs, just as of Friday of this past week, being canceled, we're kind of in a holding pattern and see how things are gonna go. But nothing has changed. The, you know, as of now, we're starting the Monday after Thanksgiving with a six-week practice, see how it goes period, and then competition starting January 11th with an extended season.
And Joe, do you know if all three high schools have the ability to stream? Or I know Greg is on the call also, or once we start playing games, are there any kind of upgrades that need to be made to any of the buildings in order to allow that to happen?
For West Strutland, we did purchase the updated Huddle program, so that will be up and running by the start of competition. I believe Poltoni and Proctor are looking into the same program. Not sure how far along they are with it, but I know that they were looking into it.
Okay, great.
Which is, the Huddle program, I'm not sure if you're aware of it, it's a stationary camera that's placed in the gym, has live streaming, obviously live streaming component to it, but coaches use it as a trading tool. The nice thing about it is you can use it for other reasons, too. If you have performances in your gyms, whether it be at holiday concerts or anything else, you can stream anything that happens within that space.
What's the price on that? This is Gail.
Yeah, so the first year is, if you already have, see, some people, I think Poltoni and West Strutland already have the Huddle program. I don't believe Proctor has it. So we've been kind of paying for it anyways over the past few years, but the COVID special, the first year is $2,700. The second year is $6,000. It's a two-year contract. So the nice thing about the streaming is, though, is that you can charge to, there are ways to charge for use. West Strutland is specifically asking for donations as a kind of like a game fee, what you would normally charge for a game. We're asking for that donation or season's past donation to go forward, to pay for it in the second year. Actually, COVID funds should be able to pay for the first year.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah. So we were able to, for West Strutland anyways, to get COVID funds to pay for that first year of implementation. And then the second year, the $6,000, is we're gonna be able to raise via donations, and we're already on our way of being able to cover that cost, hopefully.
I like that idea.
Yeah.
And then after the second year, Joe, is there like an annual membership or maintenance fee?
Yeah. It's, yeah, it's a two-year contract. You can drop it after that second year, or you can continue it. If you continue it, the following year is more expensive, or you can just drop the program altogether and go back to a basic, basic agreement, which is what we had to start with.
Okay, it seems odd
It's a two-year contract.
That the fee grows rather than reducing. It's almost like a back kind of thing. Okay, and Louis, is that, are we correct, Louis, that we can cover the first year in each building at $2,700 under COVID monies?
It's definitely a covered expense. Joe reached out to me quite a while ago, and I did approve his. If the other schools wanna reach out to me about it, they can do that as well. I'll just have to check to see how much money we have left in the COVID fund.
Okay, thank you.
Louis, I have a quick question. Do we have, and sorry for my ignorance on the ins and outs of the finance part, is there something along the lines of, like, in the, in a private business world, we can do something like an accrual to potentially cover the anticipated costs or a portion of it for next year? Is there a way to do that, given the rules and regulations around our budgeting, or is it completely forbidden because it's crossing years?
So just to make sure that I'm understanding you correctly, are we saying that we can pay for next year's expense this year by doing an accrual?
Yeah, or at least accrue part of the way towards it, right, to try to balance it more like a 50-50 expense?
Not really. I mean, we're supposed to, especially when you're dealing with federal funds, you're supposed to keep the expense in the actual year that it occurred. And just given that it's a special COVID fund, I don't think we'd wanna, I, just the short answer is no, I don't think it's appropriate.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That sounds great. Thank you, Joe, for that update.
You're welcome.
I did have one thing I wanted to speak to under new business. We're gonna be getting our Quarry Valley report together here soon, and just to all particularly high school principals, we talked about this prior, but, and this is something we used to do in when we had to submit to town reports, but I'd like to see from each high school the list of 2020 graduates, what our students are doing, so we can share that out in our Quarry Valley booklet to our community members. And Louis, and I know we've spoken about this, but also the grid that we used to do, that lists the teacher, the school, education years and salary, so that there were requests and have been, particularly the past couple of years, because we changed format since we've just been doing the Quarry Valley book, rather than how we used to do it submitting to each individual town. So if you could go back and provide that information as well. Are there any objections to having that in the Quarry Valley annual report?
No.
Lisa, what were those three data, what were the three pieces of data you said?
So I can show you in, in the old, like, Proctor report, and I know West Strutland did the same. It was just like an Excel sheet for teachers. It would list their name, what they taught, what their degree was, their highest level of education, how long they had been in our system, and what their current salary was. And from the high school principals to, if we could submit our high school graduates of 2020 and where they are, or where they said they were going when they graduated. And also, we used to submit kind of like what the cover page was, any kind of highlights or like that. So I don't know how lengthy that might become for the, for the report, but I just feel like that these graduates are in product, so to speak, and our community members and taxpayers are investors, and we should be sharing what that finished product looks like as we send them out into the world. Okay, moving on to the consent, was there any other new business? Moving on to the consent agenda, approval of minutes, October 16th, 2020. A motion would be in order?
I'll make a motion.
I will make the motion.
Jim will make the motion, and Nate will second. Are there any changes, additions, deletions to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Approval of warrants. Warrants are received in your email for review, and Seth reviews and approves. Questions should be sent to Louis if there are concerns. A motion would be in order to approve the warrants.
I'll make that motion.
Artie makes the motion, second?
Kristen Whitman can second?
Kristen Whitman seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Superintendent's report.
Thanks, Lisa. I have a few items to discuss. Traditionally, this is all about budgets this year. You know, we have a few other things to consider as well. So on October 23rd, we did have an update to Vermont's strong and healthy starts. We've been working with building administrators, with staff, facilities directors, and our nurses. We feel that our schools have met all the recommendations, are in a good place, but it's something that we do monitor on a daily basis, just to make sure that's, as our students, our staff, and the building, that they're in a safe and healthy place. So like I said before, we feel we're in a good place as of right now, but we do, it is a day-to-day, you know, monitoring, just to make sure that we are current and we are kind of, you know, where we need to be. The big concern, obviously, around this time is the holiday travel. As we're moving into Thanksgiving and the winter holidays, you know, last week, there was a bit of a change in terms of the travel restrictions, where obviously you've seen this, where if anybody leaves the state of Vermont or somebody returns, that there's a mandatory quarantine. That will shift some things, obviously, for our families and for our staff. The one thing that we are asking both our communities and our staff to is make good decisions as they prepare for the holiday seasons. We have been, so we've gotten through the first quarter with relatively few incidences. A large part of that is due to the staff and the administration building out some great plans, you know, this fall. They, you know, we've met all the protocols, all the safety recommendations and requirements, and that's allowed us to stay open to this point. But it does hinge upon our communities, and that's something we have to be very careful of. It's that, you know, we're asking our community members to continue to make good decisions, and really, as we go into Thanksgiving, to, you know, to really, I know, do their best, you know, to really, you know, not travel or to avoid large group gatherings. And doing so will help us stay open a little bit longer. But we, you know, we do understand it's gonna be a tough holiday season for all involved. It'll be a little bit different. Like I said, it's doing a large part, just keeping our schools open and keeping everybody safe and healthy. Along with our schedule, I've said this before, but we will remain on our current schedule to at least January 26th, to the end of the second quarter. That is the four days in person, one day remote. We are currently meeting with representative, union leadership, the teacher staff, take a look at what the second half of the year might be. We're taking a look at the potential for the virtual academy, as well as looking at our current model with some slight alterations. So we're working through different, you know, versions of that, and we have taken a lot of points in consideration from parents, from community members, from staff, administration. So in December, we should have some recommendations for the boards in terms of what the second half of the year will look like, or, you know, what we feel should look like. Along with the concerns, we always have concerns about staffing. In a normal year, just we depleted subpoles. This year, you know, the depleted subpoles made things a little more difficult. I have been saying this, but there may be a point in time where we do have to shut down a school for the day because of staffing concerns, and that's something which we'll work closely with the building administrators on. If they feel that we cannot operate in a safe and healthy manner, we may have to, like I said, you know, close the building down for the day or for a couple of days while we get staff back. And as we move into the holiday season, it is a concern because if a staff member or someone makes a decision to travel and forced into mandatory quarantine, it may make things a little more difficult for us to keep the building open. But it is something for us to consider, and I just want to kind of talk about two points here, where while we have these staffing days in which we may have to shift to a fully remote, you know, we were looking at, obviously, we're asking for staff to let us know as early as possible because we do wanna let parents know as early as we can, that's preferably the night before, that we may have to shift in, you know, one of our schools to a full or remote option for that day. The last thing we wanna have happen is 6:30 in the morning, we have to sit there and say, hey, we're shifting to a full remote because of staffing concerns or something else. So, you know, we're working through that. The question has been asked as we move into the, you know, closer to winter months, is about snow days. And we've decided that this year, snow days will remain as they have been in the past, and a large part due to just the logistical concerns around snow days. A lot of times, you know, snow days will, you know, be up like 3:30, 4 o'clock in the morning, start to take a look at, you know, talk of the road crews and see what's going on. As we look at the, you know, shifting to a full remote, we felt that it might be very difficult to do, get in terms of technology, having students have their Chromebooks at home. So we felt if there was a need to close the building for snow or for winter-related, you know, reasons, we would go back to just having a normal school closure. We also felt that typically, when you have snow days, there is a good chance within our communities that there will also be power outage as well, which added some hardships. So we felt that it best for us this year, at least for snow days or weather-related emergencies, just to go to a closure. And we do have days built into our calendar to compensate for that, so it won't impact us at the end of the year. So as I said before, the Quarry Valley administrators, we're working close to myself and Louis and building a budget, which Louis will talk about, is with through the course of the year. I have also a meeting with principals for the seventh row buildings to look at unification efforts and look at what the next steps might be, you know, both short term and long term. And as well as the GRCSU administrative team meets on a weekly basis to really kind of go through and discuss, not just, you know, what's going on right now with COVID and with holidays, but also building out in the future as well. So, and then obviously, a couple of events we had were parent-teacher conferences, which I can let the building principals talk about, about how well that went. We just did, they said, in our first market period, and we have the Thanksgiving break coming up. Oh, and there's one more thing. On the 19th, this Thursday, you've heard about this, this voluntary testing that will take place. So the GRCSU will have their voluntary COVID testing take place on this Thursday, the 19th, in the morning. We do have a process in place in which all the kits will be delivered to the central office. And then myself and other central office administrators will then drive the kits out to the, you know, to the eight buildings, and then the, there'll be a short window for the teachers to take their test for those who want to take it, and then when they're done, we'll collect, bring it back to the central office, and we will ship it. So that will take place on the 19th. So, any questions?
This is Gail. I don't have a question, but I do have a concern because I've heard of a number of, I think it's not just the holidays that we're looking at that should be a concern, but hunting season is also upon us, and a lot of people have camps in New York or New Hampshire. And I'm not sure how many kids have been going out to go to hunting camp, but that's another thing that we should keep our eye on.
Right. I mean, you know, and that's, you're 100% correct, you know, there are a lot of things that occur here in the fall. And like I said, we ask people to make good decisions and people to be honest about their travels. Like I said, we operate on very thin margins, and it is a very fragile system. And, you know, one of the things we say is, we have, we've seen very limited number of outbreaks in schools, you know, more in communities that are being brought into schools. So we're asking, like I said, our community members to make good decisions, and they're tough decisions. I know that Governor Scott did make the announcement. We had learned that there potentially might be some of our families who are already out at some of their hunting camps. But like I said, it is something which we do ask people to be honest with us, and, you know, just, like I said, make good decisions as it play out from this point forward. So.
Yep.
Thanks.
All right, any other questions or comments for Chris's report? Hearing none. Moving on to principals' report. At the top, we have Poltoni Elementary School.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Kristen.
Hi. As Mr. Selle, Superintendent Selle said, we did have parent-teacher conferences. They were held virtually, and I feel that the feedback we received was mostly positive. I know teachers had prepared data to share with parents, and many of them had sent out questionnaires to the parents to seek feedback if there was anything that the parents wanted to talk about, so the teachers knew. if there was anything that the parents wanted to talk about, so the teachers knew ahead of time. So I think that went pretty well. I haven't heard otherwise anyways. And I would like to just thank the teachers and students and families because it has been, you know, a really busy, really prime time. I think everyone is really pulled together and has been working really hard to give kids what they need. And I'm very proud of the staff and the community for that. So thank you. One other thing, in addition to the voluntary COVID testing, it is the 50th day of school at Polton Elementary School, and we will all be wearing 50s garb. So I'll have pictures for you for my next report.
Great. Thank you. And I think we should also note that Kristen has collected all but 2415 of overdue food balances. So if anybody's looking, a collection agency individual, I would recommend her. Thank you very much. Moving on, Polton High School.
Good evening, everybody. So not much to, you know, follow up with Kristen and Chris said too, with the parent-teacher conferences last week. You know, I'm still amazed at the new interventions that our staff and students are doing. It wasn't in my report today, but I just found, or just got the email today from our art teacher. We have a virtual art show that's online. It's kind of neat. You plug in, you go into a room, and it has all the pictures on the walls and stuff. And you can look at the different pictures. So it's just, it's great seeing how people are adapting and doing, you know, the new things that are coming out of this. So, you know, we did our first COVID drill a couple of weeks ago where we, in lieu of our lockdown drill, went into the classrooms and just were asking the random questions we would ask if we had to, like, you know, how many people left the state? And then we would pick random kids, ask them, how did you get to school today? Who did you ride, if you rode a bus? Where did you sit on the bus? Where did you eat lunch? Who did you eat lunch with? Just those questions that we'd be asking them. Dr. Chick's been great, just, you know, keeping us abreast with everything that's going on. So. Can't say enough about that. And, you know, everybody in the staff is really, you know, pulling together here.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Joe? Hearing none. Moving on to Polton Elementary School. Oh, I'm sorry, Proctor Elementary School. They're all just running together for me.
Well, I saw Joe left the meeting right after he was done, so I was hoping that we had questions for him. So just to go along with parent-teacher conferences, we did student-led conferences for grades two through six again. So the parents join their student via Zoom or Google Meet. That was very successful. We had Red Ribbon Week last week, and if you take a look at our report, we had some very creative costumes and things like that, trying to keep some normalcy to our school day. Been really busy working on the budget, interviewing for a position of .5 literacy interventionist. We finally, hopefully, that contract will be approved tonight. That's been a vacancy all year, so we're very thrilled to get that filled. I'm on the Come Alive Outside Committee, so we're working on the winter passport and trying to get creative on how we can get the communities involved. That's been really fun, something I haven't done in the past, and just kind of thinking outside the box to help families get outside, socially distance, maintain, you know, healthy boundaries, but still being involved in the community. So that's been really, really fun. I do have a question in regards to our town report. Typically, we kind of highlight what we're doing currently in the schools, like our music program, our art program. Would you like it done via a typical year or what we're doing right now during COVID year?
So I'd like it, I'd like us to talk about the year we're in. I think that's important. But with respect to, and I'm sure you recall, when we were the old SU and we submitted to the town, we submitted additional information about things about our graduates and things like that. I think it's important to show community members how we're adapting to, kind of just like Joe talked about, we're having, we're still having an art show, it's just virtual. We're having parent-teacher conferences. We're just doing it differently. I think it's important for people that aren't involved in the school or don't have children in the school to understand how adjustments have been made and how students and faculty have acclimated to this pandemic. So that would be my preference. I don't know. Other board members are welcome to join in and with your thoughts.
I would agree with that. I would like to know about this year.
Okay. I was just looking back at my old report, and it was kind of like highlighting like our music program and how we're doing. And it's like, okay, so we're not doing music lessons right now. It's, you know, things are very different. So we'll, okay, that's good information. Does anybody have any questions on my report or?
Okay. Thank you very much. Proctor High School.
Here we go. The report is fairly self-explanatory, but I do want to highlight a couple of items. Just to echo what everybody else was saying, parent-teacher conferences went very well. Many of the teachers coordinated with one another so that they were sequentially held if there were multiple subjects that a parent needed to speak with a teacher concerning. I hope the board had an opportunity to just go to the website and check out our virtual open house. You know, one of the, one of the things that is interesting this year is that there are aspects of this year that while out of necessity we've had to do it, may well have been things that we wish to revisit in the future. And what do I mean? Virtual open house. I've heard a number of parents inform me and just email me that the virtual open house was very informative. Why? Because they could do it at their own leisure, number one. Number two, they could actually access a course that the child is not in at present, that they're thinking of having them enter for the second semester. So these, and we're actually, well, not we, they are thinking of actually doing another virtual open house for the second semester. So this has worked out much better than it would have expected. And it really wasn't a Bob Johnson idea, it was the teachers' idea, and they're to be commended for the work that they did. And last but not least, I really have to thank the soccer players. This year was a special year for them in the face of so much adversity, so much that they had to overcome travel restrictions, attendance restrictions, and yet the girls persevered for another year. Okay, division champs, and the boys, and within one goal, one goal. And it was, and if you talk with them, it was closer than just one goal. It was merely a couple of feet, Mr. Johnson. Okay, a couple of feet. So they are really to be commended for the work they've done. And I really have to say, for a little tiny school, they put forth one heck of a sports program. And Jake is really to be commended for all the hard work that he's done. And last but not least, to kind of echo what Joe Harrington was saying, Joe was kind enough to send me the information regarding that Hubble program, and I forwarded to Jake, the gentleman who is the sales representative, I believe is in Nebraska. Okay? Well, I think Jake has set up a time for us to meet with him. So once we get all the specs on that, hopefully, within the next few days, we'll be able to talk with Louis about installing that apparatus in our gym. So I'm looking, looking forward to that and looking forward to a great basketball season, hopefully. Okay? Other than that, any questions anybody has on anything within the documents?
Hearing none. We will move on to Wes Rutland. Thank you.
Well, good evening, everybody. I submitted my report. Sorry if it didn't get into the original packet. I'm not sure what happened. But thank you to Superintendent Selle for passing it on. I want to thank the staff for wonderful parent-teacher conferences. Things went very, very well. And the staff continue to amaze me with their resiliency, as with the kids. Something that did not make it into the report is tomorrow, we have our Student of the Quarter Awards. We actually did them for the spring about probably four weeks ago. And we're now doing the First Quarter Awards tomorrow. And included in that is our Rock Lab, which was able to socially distance a musical performance without singing. It's all acoustic and drums and piano. And so we're looking forward to that performance tomorrow to be included in our Student of the Quarter. Just trying, as folks have repeated tonight, find alternative ways to celebrate what we're doing at school. You can also see from my report that I'm working on a lot of, you know, I'm not the new guy anymore. There's a lot of work to be done. I've started to work on our continuous improvement plan, looking at how we use data and provide interventions to children as we go through. This is going to be a multi-year plan that I'm excited about taking on. And I've got lots of great people who are working behind the scenes to help me. So things have been going very, very well around those. And our new literacy program, the Pearson program, has been well-received. We're working with Pearson on that and also coming up with how we can enhance that program as the teachers get used to it. Last year, we ran a pilot in grades three and four. This year, we're doing all K to six. There's a wonderful online component that goes with that, too. So I'm very excited about the work and proud of the work that my staff is doing at West Rutland to move us forward. And a credit to Mr. Harrington and his leadership with all of the sports as well. So without him, I'm not sure where we would be on that front. So thank you to all of them. Any questions that I can ask or answer?
What about the, what about the replacement boiler?
Yep, Jim, we are waiting on the boiler to come. The company is ready to go. We're running on one boiler right now. Getting supply, as with all things COVID. It was brought up at the last board meeting. I think it was at this one, and then again at GRCSU. We're ready to go. We just have to wait for its arrival. We're anticipating it coming any week now. The building actually is quite warm. We've, we've, we've been the benefactors of at least some warm temperatures. So we are doing okay, Jim, but yes, we need to get that in. It's not a delay on anybody other than the manufacturer.
I understand. I was worried about that very same thing when we discussed this two months ago.
Yep.
The ability, the ability to get stuff. So I am, I'm a little concerned, but I know it'll get done, but I'm just worried a little bit.
Yep, I would agree. I have cautious optimism. And the company, the vendor that we have chosen to do the install is literally ready to go the minute that that comes in.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
Great. I would just say that I heard from other parents from other schools that they were very impressed with how seamless the conferences went and encouraged us to continue this option of having virtual call-in conferences. They felt that that certainly worked well, as most parents are working and they scheduled their lunchtimes around being available just to touch base with their teachers. The virtual open house, I thought, was amazing. I went on just to look at that and was very impressed with how well that was put together. I love the fact that we are continuing to find alternative ways to continue to celebrate our students and share that with the community. So thank you to all of our building administrators and faculty for taking on that added piece to be able to do that. Thank you very much. Moving on to personnel, we have a couple of retirements in our package. I don't know, Mr. Slinker, if you want to speak to either one of those?
Sure. We have two wonderful longstanding educators at West Rutland School retiring. Kathy Turgen, who currently teaches third grade, and Kristy Pluziak, who currently teaches fourth grade. I do not have the numbers of years of service, but we're talking decades. Wonderful educators, and they will be dearly missed, and we wish them well. You know, it's interesting, you've got two veteran teachers who continue to impress me every single day with their resiliency and in the face of virtual learning, have been embracing it and doing a really good job. So hats off to them. They will be very, it'd be hard for us to replace them as we move forward, but they are wonderful educators and will work on looking to fill those vacancies in the spring when the time is more appropriate.
Thank you. A motion would be in order to accept the two resignations.
I make a motion.
That will second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Contract recommendations. At the top, you have professional staff. Sarah Godfrey, which is a horizontal move. Are there any questions about that?
Lisa, this is Kristen Ross. Sorry, there's piano in the background here. Chris or Lisa, for some reason, I only have like half of our, our materials. I don't, I only had half the principals' reports. I didn't have a superintendent report at all. So I have not looked at the contracts because that wasn't included. There's a whole bunch of repeated things that were sent, but can somebody just forward out all the materials again while Lisa's talking about the contracts?
If you guys could send that to me, too. Sarah, I got the same thing Kristen did. I think I've got six of the Turgen resignation and none of the stuff you're talking about now.
I will text, I'll text Wendy right now to see if she can resend all the materials.
Yeah, they came all at once at 21 files, but they, a bunch of the files were the same files. So, so sorry, I just kind of going through that now, realizing that I'm, and I don't have anything from Louis. So if we're doing budget drafts, stuff like that, I don't have those either.
Okay, I will.
Yeah, I think it's an around-the-board topic. Pardon the pun.
So anyway, Lisa, if you want to go ahead and just kind of describe what you're looking at slowly, I think I can keep up, at least for this part.
So the first piece is a contract recommendation, professional staff. It is for Sarah Godfrey. She is a Polton Elementary School teacher. It is a simply a horizontal move from 71,713 to 73,739. The second piece on the page is non-union and supervisor contract rates for increased consideration. And without objection, I would move that to executive session. The third piece on the page is support staff recommendation. Terri Sadie for Polton High School, which is a .5 library para at $15.42 an hour. Ashley Siemens for Polton Elementary School, which is a reading assistant at $14.25 an hour. Our libraries opened, open in all buildings?
Lisa, I can speak to Wes Rutland. We are open in a limited capacity. We actually have protocols, and I think most of the buildings do, for taking books out and returning them, following all procedures to make sure that the books are safe when they are brought back. But it is not open, open as it has been in the past. All of our shelves are still covered. Classrooms are not going in there. It's very limited, but it is open for resources and for students and teachers to access those resources when they need them.
Okay. Is the reading assistant position something that was an unfilled position at Polton Elementary?
Yes, it was an unfilled position. Yes, it was an unfilled position.
Okay.
Lisa, is there a contract in there for my .5 literacy specialist?
There is not. No. What is the difference between a reading assistant and a literacy specialist?
I can't, for Christy, but a specialist, I believe, would be licensed. Our reading assistant is an instructional assistant through Gen Ed funds.
Yes, mine is a licensed teacher.
Okay.
If a contract comes to you within the next two days, could there be a way it's signed? Because you're supposed to say.
Kristy, your position would come under the SU with grant funded.
Oh, all right. Thank you, Lewis.
Is there a full-time librarian at Poltoni High School, Lewis? And we're hiring a para to be in the library with her as well?
There's a full-time librarian that's shared between the elementary school and the high school.
Okay.
And then the half-time para at the high school.
Okay, thank you. So before I go on to extracurricular, could we have a motion to approve the professional staff for Sarah Godfrey and support staff of Terry Sadie and Ashley Siemens?
This is Gail Curtis. I move we accept them.
Second?
Second.
Second by Jim. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. The second piece is extracurricular. Have you all received the packets or no? Okay, so I'll just read those. The first one is for James Kelly, a mentor stipend to $500. Melissa Christensen, Poltoni High School Art Club advisor, $707. Melissa Christensen, Poltoni Yearbook Advisor, $1,719. The rest are all for West Rutland. Ally Mitchell, seven, eight girls basketball coach, $750. Alan White, seven, eight boys basketball coach, $750. David Bartlett, sixth-grade boy basketball coach, $1,000. Karen Ames, sixth-grade girls basketball coach, $1,250. Melissa Gueye, fifth-grade boys, $750. Lauren Harvey, fifth-grade girls, $750. Carl Serani, varsity girls, $4,000. Jordan Toler, varsity boys, $3,000. Matthew Serani, JV girls, $1750. Mike Davis, JV boys, $1750. Joe Harrington, I do have one question. Are there straight fifth-grade games and straight sixth-grade games? Or do those games, are they generally mixed games?
It kind of depends on the numbers. A lot of times, they are straight five, straight six. Sometimes we need to move kids back and forth, but for the majority, yes.
Okay.
But there are times that we do have to mix them if numbers make us do that.
Okay. And have we done numbers for basketball yet for any schools? Or we're just approving contracts in anticipation?
So my contracts are based on the numbers that I've got coming for this season, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Right. Are there any questions about the extracurricular contracts?
Yes, Seth has two questions. First one, Lisa, just a quick recap. I'm sorry, were there any Poltoni coaches listed in that long list?
No.
And I didn't think so. Okay, that's fine. We can, no need to elaborate. Second question for Joe. Art club in Poltoni, is that active at the moment? What are they doing? And what are they okay to do?
She's doing some stuff virtually, I believe, right now. I don't, they're not meeting after school or anything, but she's kind of doing some virtual stuff with them.
Okay, thank you.
And who does the mentor stipend individual belong to, James Kelly?
He belongs to me, but I believe he's mentoring the driver's ed teacher at West Rutland.
Okay.
That is correct.
Okay. All right, are there any other questions on the extracurricular contracts? Hearing none, a motion would be in order to approve the extracurricular contracts as read.
I can make the motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
I'll second.
Second by Nate. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Vacancies, I don't have anything in my pocket about that. I'm guessing those are still kind of the general ones that we talked about, some under principals' report.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to finance, Lewis.
Good evening, everyone. So I just emailed the budget. Hopefully, everybody received that. For those of you who didn't receive it to begin with. Give everybody a minute just to check real quick, and then I'll get started.
I'm not seeing it.
Okay. Well, I'll just walk you through it slowly, then. Okay, so I'll get started. I will, if you don't already have it, I'll make sure that it gets sent out to you either later tonight or tomorrow.
Can I, sorry to interrupt. This is Kristen. Is there a way to share screens so that we can see what you're looking at instead of you just describing it?
Yes, I think I can do that.
That would be awesome. Thanks.
I just reset it as well, so hopefully it will come through as well.
I just received it from you, Chris.
Yep, got it. I sent it to Kristen and Kristen. Sorry.
Now you have multiple copies. Feaster family. Wendy will be sending the board report to you as well.
So we're all looking at the summary of changes draft one, correct? Is that what you're?
I'm just, yeah, I'm pressing the button now to share it as well, for those of you that don't have it.
Okay.
Okay, so the first page, the whole document's 20 pages. The first page is the summary of changes. So this summary of change lists all the major items that are having an effect on the financial piece of the budget. So the way the budget's broken down, it's each school has their own section. And then there's a section at the end labeled district-wide, and that's where you'd have any expenses that aren't specific to a certain school, such as tuition, plan operations is all lumped together under there, fiscal services, SRO, there's a district-wide athletics and so forth. So under district-wide, the major changes in the budget, special ed disallow increased by $86,000. We did talk about this at the SU board meeting. We increased some of our estimates. Looking at the actuals from prior years, we increased the estimates for the amount of time that paras are spending as disallowed time from 15% to 17.5%. And we also increased the time for the related service providers, such as OT, PT, and speech. We had them at 0% in prior years. We increased them to 5%. So those changes resulted in an $86,000 increase in your local budget. In the past, you were seeing those charges, but you were just seeing them after the fact when we did the bill backs. The SU assessment is down by $67,000. Right now, first draft has been presented to the board. These numbers are based on the second draft, which will go to the SU board on Wednesday. The general fund budget, the assessment is down $25,000. And special ed budget, the assessment is down approximately $92,000. So the Corey Valley's portion of those savings is $67,000. There's a 10% increase in health insurance built into this, which is approximately $145,000. Right now, we're being told that what was provided by Visbit is a 9.8% overall increase in health insurance. So we had budgeted the 10% before we got that estimate from Visbit, so we were close. Also, later, or earlier this year, you approved the Proctor refinance of the lease. That resulted in a one-time increase of $77,000, but overall savings over the life of the loan of $45,000. If you recall, when we approved that lease, the prior lease had a stepped increase each year. It was going, over the course of the 10 years, it was going up a little bit each year, but then towards the end of the lease, it was jumping up $150,000 each year. What we did is we took that lease, we refinanced it at a lower interest rate, and we made the payments the same every year. So that resulted in a one-time increase this year, and it'll be flat for the remainder of the 10 years, so we won't see another increase. Also, Proctor's other bond will be paid off next year, so we'll have those savings in next year's budget. We added a new line for field maintenance for $10,000. That's to maintain all of the field at Terranova, Poltoni High School, and West Rutland. We added, let's see, a tuition revenue increase by $135,000. That's an estimate based on this year's students. They're taking those students and moving them forward one year and just estimating what we think the current sixth-grade class, where they'll go for, well, the Middletown, places that we know we get students, IRA. So that is resulting in an increase in revenue of $135,000. That's also based on an increase in our tuition rate. I'm estimating approximately a 3% increase, which will bring our tuition rate to $17,500. I will be bringing that to the board at next month's meeting for approval. Increase in transportation costs of $75,000. This is a result of two reasons. One, we renewed the contract with Betja last year, which had a large increase in the first few years. It had been quite a while since we had gone out to bid. So our contract price was way below market value. So we were seeing a large increase in the contract rate just due to rebidding. But the second reason is, we receive approximately 45% back in revenue as a raw transportation cost. That revenue is based on a two-year lag. So any revenue we receive in FY '22 is based on FY '20 expense. And if you recall, earlier this spring, our transportation costs were reduced due to COVID, and we received credits from the vendor for labor and for fuel. So that decreased our expense cost, which in turn is going to lower our revenue that we receive in FY '22. So that's resulting in the increase in costs. The partial offset to that would be the surplus that we ended FY '22 with. So those are the major changes for the district-wide section. At Poltoni Elementary School, there's a position that was funded locally that's been moved to the SU. No change in the position. It's just moving the wages to a purchase service. That position is currently funded 75% through a grant and 25% local. There is a staff increase built into the of a .5 FTE for a BBA, which is a behavior, board-certified behavior analyst. And then added the after-school program for $10,000. Previous to this year, the after-school program has been funded through Medicaid funds. Those Medicaid funds are drying up, so this needs to be moved to local budget. We tried to move it to local budget last year, and the budget couldn't sustain it. We committed to funding it one more year out of the SU, but we can only sustain that.
How far out are they? We talked about this before, about being able to look at tapestry. As I recall, there's some kind of timeframe. And is that next year that they can look at having tapestry?
So it's a five-year cycle. I don't recall what year they're on. It may be FY '23. I could look into that, though.
For some reason, I'm thinking it's two more years, but I could be wrong.
I have a vague remembrance that it's further out as well. It's not.
Yeah, I think it is.
I think it had just renewed when we were talking about it last year.
I think this is our second year, so I do believe we have three additional years for the five-year commitment.
Okay. At Poltoni High School.
One more thing. Have we, since they have had some lost revenue, have we reached out to them to see if they would be interested perhaps in just doing a three-year contract with us? Because they've also suffered some revenue losses here, particularly from the spring. Would it behoove us to see if that's a possibility?
Who are you referring to? I'm sorry.
Tapestry.
So it's a five-year grant cycle. It's not a contract, so.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
They'd have to wait to that grant cycle before we apply for the grant. So if no other questions on that, we'll move on to Poltoni High School. So there was one position that was not filled, and that, we're having those savings this year as well. That was a psychological service position. So we'll have those savings this year and next year and going forward. And then there's another reduction of a .5 FTE position. And we can go into more details on these positions when we move into executive session. At Proctor Elementary, there's no material changes included in the budget. Proctor High School, there was one position cut this year as well, so those savings are flowing through to next year, and that was the directive student management position. And those savings here are approximately $105,000. And then there was just a shift of a position. The library para was moved to the office. West Rutland, there was two retirements accounted for. Both are being replaced. We have some savings in those retirements. But, so they are both eligible for the retirement incentive, but just estimating what the new salary will be minus the incentive and the current salary, there's a small savings build. And then there is an increase of a .1 FTE teacher that's currently in our teacher. That's a .9 that's shared between West Rutland and Proctor. And this budget includes increasing her to a 1-0. Other items to consider, these are things that we can, just to keep discussing, they're not built into the budget. So the Proctor High School nurse position, that position was budgeted for FY '21 as an assistant to the school nurse, which would be an ESP position. Due to a lack of candidates, we hired that position as a teacher position. This budget includes that position as an ESP position. So the person that's in that position now just has a one-year contract for the remainder of this year. So we need to discuss what that position will look like in the future and adjust this budget based on whatever that decision is. Corey Valley Trucks, there was a request from Proctor for a new truck that's needed to get equipment from one building to the other. get equipment from one building to the, to the other. Um, the good, so, well, I'm going to come back to that item in a minute, uh, at the, at the end. Um, only high school, um, this is, is not included, but there was a request for a regular NIA. Uh, as well as some, um, increases for some staff members, uh, non-union staff members. And then, uh, another item which is not, um, we're not sure about yet, is the possible reduction in title funding for the Poltony Elementary Interventionist. As I mentioned earlier, currently their interventionist is funded seventy-five percent through title. Um, there's been a decrease in title funds over the years, and that position, um, is exceeding the amount of funding that should be received by Poltony Elementary School. Uh, I have to have discussions with the grant coordinator, uh, but there's a possibility of that funding being moved to FY twenty-two. So all of that included, um, so the next about fifteen pages are just the details of the budget, um, for every line item. Uh, if you have the budget in front of you, I'm just going to scroll down to the end. It's on probably, let's see here, page. Anything in yellow is stuff that's still pending. So right now, total expense is up by two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, which is one point one eight percent. Educational spending is down, so educational spending is the amount we have to raise in property taxes. It takes your total expense minus your local revenue, local revenue is other than property taxes. So education spending right now is down by seventy-nine thousand, which is a half a percent. I'll just repeat that just to everyone, that it's actually down by a half a percent. Uh, and then the last few pages are just the bill back detailed, is the regular ed bill backs. Um, and then the special ed bill backs, uh, these are positions that are contracted at the SU but billed back to the local districts. Um, the special ed ones are the disallowed amount, and then the regular ed ones are just positions that are partially grant funded or part, partially funded through the SU, but the remainder of their salary has to be billed to the local budget. Uh, so coming back to the trucks, so, uh, we, I, I applied for a grant through the state for, through COVID funds. Um, and we were, the SU was awarded a grant in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars to purchase a truck. Um, or trucks, whichever, would as, as much as we can get with the forty-five thousand dollars. Um, so we will be looking into what we can get with that amount, and that vehicle will be shared amongst the SU based on where it's needed the most. Which at, at the time being is, is, the requests have come from Proctor, so that's where would we, um, at least based out, based at this point. Any questions?
Louis, this is Kristen, would the truck be, so you said it would be just transporting equipment, um, not human beings? I mean, besides the driver, obviously.
Correct, I mean, the, the main premise of it was to, um, for, to look, because Proctor does not, um, have transportation uh, via buses, that they would use it for the transporting of meals in case we, uh, go fully remote or for delivering of meals on Wednesdays, um, and to transport meals in between the buildings. Uh, but then after we get past the pandemic, um, looking what uses we have for that truck in the future, which would be to transport equipment either from between buildings, or if somebody needs to run to the hardware store and get some two-by-fours or other equipment, it's, it's for that purpose. It's not to transport people.
So I would request that if, once that is, if this is approved and that's purchased, that there is a, a human being that is in charge of, even though that's a shared truck, to have one person or the clearinghouse who will keep that, um, you know, the records on it, the maintenance up on it, all that stuff. I just have found with shared vehicles before, in, in a business setting, that everyone's in charge of it and no one's in charge of it. So just to, you know, kind of make sure that that is, you know, the oils change and all that stuff happens, so that it doesn't work for five years and then we're done.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions for Louis? I have questions, but they're personnel related, so I will hold those until executive session. All right, hearing none, thank you, Louis. Um, the second piece in finance is the bill back handout. I don't believe Christine is here.
She is not, no.
Okay, it's something that we, as Louis said, we had talked about in prior meeting, we talked about, spoke about at the SU meeting. This is something that she was going to provide for, um, while spring, and I thought it was just a good informational piece for board members to have. So in the spring, when we talk about bill backs, um, you understand time studies and the disallowed expenses. So it's really just an informational handout for you, um, to have. Um, and in the spring, as you know, that's historically when we talk about what the bill backs are. So if you do have any specific questions about that, you are welcome, um, to email Christine for clarifications. The next piece is policy, um, in your pocket, you have the prevention of sexual harassment as prohibited by Title Nine. Um, I don't know, Chris, do you want to speak about the policy?
Sure, so this is a piece of, actually it's a legislation that, uh, came about a while back, but, uh, so in mid-August, this really uh, became law for school, you know, in schools here in Vermont. And so, uh, sexual harassment used to be tucked into the harassment and bullying, and so therefore they've extracted this, made it a separate policy. Uh, this is the model policy that the VSBA, uh, came up with, and it's a blend of policy and procedure. And part of the reason for that is because there are, uh, very specific steps and protocols that must be taken. Um, and so as I explained to the policy committee, uh, my recommendation was that we take the, uh, model policy from the VSBA, you know, the, the, the whole thing, uh, and implement that within our schools. Um, it, it is very lengthy, it's, uh, very dense, very thick, but, uh, there's a lot in there that, uh, we cannot deviate from. Uh, so therefore, it felt just our best interest to just take this policy and adopt it.
And technically, it's already law, we're just now adopting it. I mean, we're already obligated to, um, follow it, so it's really just a procedural issue here.
Right, if there is a situation, oh, real quickly, if there is a situation in schools, this would be the, the policy and procedure that our administrators would follow, so.
I would make a recommendation to adopt it.
I second that, this is Gil.
Motion by Jim, so by Gil. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. On the next meeting date is December twenty-first. If you have future agenda items, um, feel free to email myself or Chris, and I'll make sure that they will be addressed on the next agenda. Uh, we do need to have an executive session for a personnel matter or personnel matters. Is there any other business to come before the board, from, um, board members?
No, this is Kristen Ross, there's a separate Google Meet for the exec session, right, Chris?
Yes.
Yes, there is.
Does every, did everyone receive that invitation for the executive session meeting?
I did not.
Uh, I don't, I don't think I did either.
Okay. So, Chris, could you?
I'll send it right now.
We'll wait a couple minutes.
If we could just have the numbers, we wouldn't, you wouldn't have to do that.
The phone number?
Yeah. And the PIN number, too.
Well, I have it if you want it.
I'll email to you guys, okay?
Don't say it as we're recording, if it's supposed to be private.
Yeah, Jim, you're, you're on the list, and, uh, so I'll send it to, uh, Nate and Jim right now, okay?
Yeah, I have it. I'm good.
Okay.
Send it to both of you.
I just had a quick question.
Nothing else? Sure, go ahead.
No, I just didn't know, I'm bumped offline, so I'm on my phone, so I'm just not sure if we are leaving or not joining executive session, I just wanted to know.
I, I think just the board is moving into executive session.
Okay, perfect, thank you. All right, have a good night.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
Night, guys.
Nate, did you get the email?
Uh, I don't think so, I, I'm looking right now, I.
All right, am I going to your Yahoo one, Nate?
Oh, okay.
Let me just, uh. Chris, I need to. You need as well, Louis.
All right, yeah, I got it.
Okay.
Jim, did you get the number?
I did not.
It was sent to your GRCSU one, Jim, is there another?
JFM, LFM, at AOL dot com.
Okay, I'll do that one. All right.
I got it, thanks.
So are we good, are we good to hang up here and go into the other one?
Move in the executive session at seven twenty-three and everyone can rejoin.
Seth will make that motion to move in the executive session, seven twenty-three.
And a second?
Nate.
Nate, great, all right, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, so everyone can sign off of this and move into the next meeting, okay?